Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Seneca County Board of Supervisors regular meeting for December 11th. Margaret, roll call, please.
Supervisor Reynolds?
Here.
Supervisor Garlick-Lorenzetti?
Here.
Supervisor Brunel?
Here.
Supervisor Davidson?
I'm here.
Supervisor Proudy?
Here.
Supervisor Kaiser?
Here.
Supervisor Lazaro?
Present.
Supervisor Cronenwetter?
Here.
Supervisor La?
Here.
Supervisor McRevy?
Here.
Supervisor Heisen?
Here.
Supervisor Trout?
Here.
Supervisor Shipley?
Here.
Supervisor Hockadell?
Here.
You have a forum, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance in any moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands before its citizens one nation under one law, indivisible, to liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, the first order of business tonight is a public hearing to receive public comment on proposed Law A of 2018. Can I have a motion to open this public meeting? Go ahead, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone that would like to speak regarding this proposed local law A? Anybody? All right. And if no one wishes to comment, can I have a motion to close this public vote? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next, presentations. I'll call in Joe McGrath?
I'm the public speaker.
Excuse me? Okay. Okay, can I have a motion to open the second public hearing? What is this on? This is on the... Oh, this is on the salaries.
I'll make a motion to open this for salaries.
Um...
This is rather a good... It's a budget.
What is B?
Budget.
Okay, A was the salaries, B is the budget itself. Stand corrected. Thank you, Supervisor Heisen. You're right on the ball tonight.
Oh, he's been hitting me on that.
Did somebody offer a motion to open this public hearing?
No vote.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, is there anybody that would like to comment on the proposed 2019 Seneca County budget? I believe there's copies. Good evening. Come forward.
Good evening.
State your name, where you live.
My name is Mary Ann Korowski. I live in the town of Romulus. And I'm here to comment on the county budget. But first I have a question. I have one of the problems that I have in making any comments about the public budget. I'd like to comment on the budget, but I have absolutely no financial data for 2017 or 2018 with which to work. So it's very hard to predict whether these costs, as predicted, are reasonable or efficient. And I just would like to say that as the Board of Supervisors, I think that you should be looking to get your annual financial data before you make a final decision on the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Is there anybody else that would like to comment or address this board from the public? Then I'll call on you, Supervisor Kaiser. Anybody else from the public? If not, Supervisor Kaiser?
Yeah, just a quick update from perhaps our county manager with the Bonn-Deo findings for 1718. Are we substantially done with that process?
Supervisor Kaiser, since we're in the middle of a public hearing on the county budget?
Well, let me...I should have prefaced it with the statement...
Go ahead and preface it.
Yes, that agreeing with the resident who just spoke in the town of Romulus. I think it's important to know where we really are standing with our finances before we vote on a budget for 2019. That's why I asked that.
Okay, that's your bearing. Mitch, you want to take and stab that down?
Sure, I'd ask Director Stevens to assist me at any point that's necessary. The 2017 audited financials are completed. Correct me if I say anything wrong, Mayor Haley. We will probably have some budget amendments related to '17 to bring to the Board sometime over the next couple of months. But in terms of preparation of the '19 budget, we are reasonably confident in the numbers that we've put together for the Board to consider to vote either tonight or no later than December 20th. I point out, December 20th, under applicable New York state law, is the last day that the Board has to vote on the budget. So we do have some time constraints. If the closeouts '17 and are working to early '19 on '18 adjustments suggest that we have erred in any way, we would certainly come back to the Board and ask for your consideration to amend the budget.
Supervisor Kaiser, did that satisfy your request?
It did, Chairman.
Thank you. Anybody else? If not, I'll ask for a motion to close this public hearing. So, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, this public meeting is officially closed. Next, presentations. Joe McGrath, CEO and President of the Finger Lakes Regional Land Bank. Joe? Evening.
Good evening. I have a power report presentation for...
Okay, so you're going to need a screen.
Yes.
Margaret, can you help him out with that? And the members of...that are sitting up here?
There should be more under your seat.
Oh, I see where they are. Okay.
Yes. All right, so as required by the New York State Land Bank Act, I am to give you an annual report about land banking activities every year, but this year's 2018, so here we are. Thank you for having us and supporting the project. Commission statement, I think most of us are probably pretty familiar with it. But basically what we do is we take the worst of the worst properties all around the county, and we advance grant funding to bring them back in beneficial use, put them back in tax rolls or into other hands that will be beneficial to the community. So, the 2018 land bank overview. Throughout most of 2018, we had 10 properties in our inventory. We got three of them from the tax foreclosure list in 2017, five from the list in 2018, and two purchased from private owners. This year, we completed five demolitions, three stabilizations, and we're selling two on the open market. And for dispositions, we have sold one. Finally, the property in Junius, we sold to the neighbor for a sidelot sale. We have two sales under contract, and we have seven more properties to figure out how we're going to move them, whether on the open market, to a developer like Habitat for Humanity, or to a municipal. So, we go through some of the properties, not all of them, to give the Board and the public an idea of what it takes to redevelop these properties financially and some history behind them. This one's in the Village of Waterloo. It was received off the tax foreclosure list in 2018. The village had issues with drug use in the property. The police department actually put that board up that you see in the front. It was vacant and abandoned, and we were able to remove that at a cost total for everything that we put into it for $26,000. So this is one that we're going to be putting on the open market. And now is not a drag on our closed department, the village police department, the village services. So we're happy to see that one go. This one was in a sewage situation in Morde City in the town of Waterloo. So we've removed this trailer. And the lot is going to be sold next week to the adjacent homeowner, who is their qualified family, for the grant requirements. We're happy to see that one move back into hands that are responsible. So again, for your review, you can review the cost later, but for our purposes now, I don't think we really can go through all of them. This property in the town of Vedrick, in the hamlet of Romulus, was condemned for many years and had co-complaints going back many years as well. We were able to take that one down. So now we're going to get into the properties that we purchased from private owners. We just acquired this property at 101 Virginia Street in the Village in late October for $15,706, I think the final tally came to be. It's an older home, Victorian home. It's a very prominent home on Virginia Street or Route 96 in the Village. So we're happy to be able to get this property back into responsible hands. You can see, in the course of its life, it was a very prominent property in Waterloo. Coming from the north towards the south, it's one of the first large Victorian mansion types in the Village. And we're hoping to avoid tearing it down. We're doing our best that we can to avoid doing that. We're in talks right now with the Landmark Society of Western New York. We're applying for a grant to do an architectural and planning study to cost out what it's going to take to rehab this whole thing. Will that rehab be supported by whatever use is in there, whether it's commercial or residential or rentals, or what can be supported to save this building? So we're investigating that. In the meantime, we're having the roof repaired as best that we can, and we're having the property cleaned up, debris removed, and we're also removing the back garage that's pulling in the back of the house. So that's where we are with that property. The bowling alley, also on Virginia Street in Waterloo, is being demolished right now. We acquired this property from a private owner at the beginning of 2018, who had bought it from the 2017 tax auction. And here last year was immediately underwater, and we were able to purchase it off of him using grant funding for $25,000, which is about what he had into it at that point in taxes and acquisition costs. So that one's being torn down right now. It should be completed sometime this week, maybe in the next week. We're working on the details of transferring the property to the Village of Waterloo. In their downtown market analysis, they had identified that site as being ripe for using for public space and programable. So if they want to have outdoor concerts or farmers markets or that type of thing, that space is apparently very good for that. So we're going to work with them to see if they can make that happen. We have torn down, in the picture there, the facade that says Waterloo line, but we decided to use this drawing because it really speaks to what the village and their consultants believe that property can someday be. This one in Ovid, we received this one in 2017, but it required a lot of attention in 2018 as well. Again, all of grant funding, we were able to remove garages that were falling down. Officiations all around the side of the house. We installed a well. We installed a septic system and a new roof. This is all done, so Seneca County Habitat for Humanity could take the structure on and finish the rehab and place a family in it. If we hadn't done all of that preliminary work, their numbers wouldn't have worked. So in stabilizing that structure and doing that initial investment, we enabled the structure to be saved and for a family to eventually be housed there. So going through, we have the financials there for that as well. Other land bank properties we have, 16 Marcus Street in the town of Seneca Falls. We're hopefully going to be awarding a grant...excuse me, a contract for that in the fall, excuse me, in the spring, late winter, that will rehab the entire building. And we will sell that to a private owner when it's completed. We finished the rehab...excuse me, the demolition of 800 Caroline Road, and we sold that to the next door neighbor for a sidelot sale. 5172 Route 414, we're going to be selling that on the open market for a real estate agent. 3529, Route 89 in the town of Fayette. We're working with the neighbors to figure out some property line issues, and it's a non-performing lot to begin with. So we're working to figure out how we can merge the lots or combine them in a way that's financially reasonable for the land bank to take on or any of the neighbors. And last, 33 Taylor in the Village of Waterloo. This property does not have a marketable title, so we're trying to figure out what we can do with it, if we can sell it to Habitat. They want it. They want to put a house there. But again, that marketable title is an issue. There is a bankruptcy there that wasn't declared. And we're working with the county attorney's office to figure out if there's anything we can do with it or if it will expire or what the story is. So that's where we're at. Some next steps. Over the next two years, we got a grant from Enterprise Community Partners, supported by the Attorney General's Office for $650,000. And that will fund eight demolitions, two rehabs for 10 properties total, with two properties to be purchased from a private buyer. So the demolitions, we're looking at those to be properties that we get off the tax foreclosure list. Later tonight, we will be talking about resolution, transferring those at a nominal cost, and we'll save that discussion for later. But those are the ones, the demolitions, we're asking to be transferred at a nominal cost. If we can rehab a decent one, we definitely will investigate that. But what we're looking to do is acquire properties as we did with the bowling alley in 101 Virginia Street, prominent places in the villages that really can give us the most impact for this money, community impact. So if we can get properties like that off the tax foreclosure list, that's all the better. But if we need to go out and make sure we can spend this money on prominent properties around the county, then we have the option to make purchase offers. So, does anybody have any questions?
I'd just like to say good work knocking down the old bowling in downtown Waterloo. That's going to open everything up right down through there. It's going to be good.
Any other questions?
I'd just like to thank you, Joe, for the job, and Jill, and Bill, Bill's not here.
All right. Thank you. That's the end of the presentation.
Okay, we do not have any other practitioners tonight. So next agenda item would be the open privilege of the Board. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to address this Board? Mary Ann, you're up again.
Thank you. I have a question before I start. How many people in this room are customers of sewer districts, of the Seneca County sewer districts? At your home or the old home? Okay, one?
Two old in here.
One?
Village of...
Okay, there are two of us.
Well, I have 200. I got 300, 400 people in my town.
You're not an in-district customer.
Which one is it? Sewer 1 or sewer 2? Well, we never pictured.
No, we never did, sorry. You're an out-of-district customer regardless.
I'm an outcast, I guess.
Yes. In any event, the reason that I want to talk to you tonight, and I wasn't really planning on talking to you because I really thought that the motion to move ahead with the additional funding for the professional engineering report would be stopped in committee until the committee got more information. So what I wanted to do tonight is share some of the information that I've been able to put together, including an email that was sent to certain members of the Board of Supervisors and shared with me from the Department of Environmental Conservation about this project. And what the DEC said in an email to Mr. Preem when they were invited yesterday morning to the meeting tonight is, they thanked him for inviting him, and then they said, what we...they wanted to provide information about effluent limits, and that will help everyone see what the options are for each plant. This is not aimed at a particular option, but to get DEC information for your speedies permits out for all of your use for analysis. We have not continued looking through the engineering report that was submitted since the announcement that things might be changing, potentially from the recommendation. However, there were some things in our preliminary review that would have generated comments from us, for instance, conflicting directions suggested and financial analysis. However, what DEC is saying is that within the next month or so, they will be issuing the new draft permits for the Hillside and Five Points wastewater treatment plants because there are changes at those two plants. They can't wait for the four, or five, or six years it's going to take for this professional engineering report to be accomplished, if it ever is accomplished. And there are no plans right now for the county. We should know how expensive those are and what those changes are to fund those projects. Everything is being put in this great big basket of the consolidation, and right now there are violations, affluent limits that are going to need to be addressed much before that. They said that these draft permits will be issued as a public notice within the next month or two, and they're going to separate the permits. The other thing is, they're in the process of doing a complete full technical review for the Willard wastewater treatment plant, and that is going to be within the next several months. And then they said, the discussion for the municipalities needs to be what three separate permits and three upgrades look like, and what a consolidated plan looks like for one discharge location. Then the county and the municipalities and the agencies will have some treatment options and finance information to discuss and decide. They also provided copies of the draft affluent limits for the two wastewater plants in sewer district number two. But what I wanted to talk about specifically is the fact that this plan to consolidate, there are going to be significant delays in addressing the sewage, the problems at the Willard plant with the two sewer pumps. When I took over as the administrator of the sewer and water districts, DEC was issuing deficiency statements for those sewer pumps. They said that they were in risk of failing. If those pumps fail, and I don't know what sort of contingency plan there could possibly be, those plants fail, all of the sewage from the Fayette Town Line and the Village of Ovid, will all... Everything is going to just discharge at Willard. So delaying the change of the sewage treatment plants for four or five years while a change of treatment method is contemplated, I don't think is a reasonable or rational decision. And I think if those pumps fail, you're having done little, very little, to provide corrective action, I don't think the insurance company is going to think wisely about the county. And frankly, the people in the county districts can't afford to do that, to pay the fines that are going to result from the, at this point, willful ignorance of that problem. I had pulled out correspondence, I've been filing FOIL requests from the county and from DEC, and what DEC told the county in April of 2017, which is 18 months ago. They said that they wanted, developed and submitted a contingency plan that can be immediately implemented in the event either of the existing screw pumps fail or deteriorate to the point they can no longer keep pace with peak influent flows. Sewage backups in the collection system, which should then create unauthorized bypasses, are excellent indicators that the pump has failed. There was a response, there was no response to that citation from DEC until a four-month late response was submitted by the county manager, the then-county manager. And the county manager said, as far as the screw pumps are concerned, he is going to escrow funds in the bond revenue of $800,000 to cover any failure in those pumps. Now, the last time I looked at financial data for the bond balances in the sewer fund, there was none. So you've got a plan that's based on escrowing $800,000 that I'm not sure you have. Maybe it's been found. I don't know. But then tonight, we have a plan to spend more money, and $40,000 of that money is going to come from the same bond fund that the $800,000 was escrowed from. It doesn't seem to appear. I think that the Board of Supervisors, before they move ahead on this plan, needs to get more information on what are the immediate needs for the sewer districts based on the new speedies permits that will be issued shortly, and what are the long-range plans that can be made. I just don't think you have enough information. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Is there anybody else that would like to address the Board?
Yeah, I would. Mr. Chairman, just so for the record to show... Mr. Chairman, the, just so, for the record, to show that, yes, these screw pumps have been a problem or a concern for a long time. When the county took the districts back to Waterloo back in 2009, the Board of Directors of the Sewer, Sewer Board, at the time, those screw pumps were in the tenure plan to be acted on, and they never, apparently, they never worked, so just wanted to throw that out.
Right there.
That's it.
Supervisor Heisen.
Since everybody's curious about the balance of 800,000, do we have the 800,000 still in the budget, in the escrow account? We were working on that a couple months ago.
So, currently, in the capital project, if the bonds was put in for Water 1 and Sewer 1, it was originally at 2.2 million, there's currently a balance of 886,400 available, of which, from the original budget that was entered, 231,000 would be for the Water 1 budget, and the 655,000 is for Sewer 1.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you, Ellie.
And that mystery is gone now.
Anybody else? Thank you. We'll move on to the approval of the meeting minutes for the November 13, 2018 board meeting. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? Be in no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's approved. Reports of standing committees. First, Supervisor McGreevy, Health and Human Services. Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Health and Human Services Committee met on Tuesday, November 27th. Other than the multitude of resolutions which appear on tonight's agenda, I would like to draw your attention to item number 44 on page 42 of the agenda. I will be introducing this resolution proclaiming January as Human Trafficking Awareness Month in Seneca County, and recognizing January 11, 2019, as National Human Trafficking Awareness Day. And in addition, I would like to greet this resolution in full when I introduce it. That's all I have, sir.
Number 44, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you, Ron. Next, Supervisor Davidson, Human Resources and Government Operations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had three issues that were discussed at the last meeting. amended rules were forwarded to a scheduled 2019 organization meeting, approved setting the organization meeting for January 8, 2019. We will have the regular board meeting on the same night, followed by the 2019 organization meeting. Number two, schedule a year-end Ways and Means Committee and a year-end board meeting, approved setting the year-end board meeting for Thursday, December 27, at 2:00 p.m. And the third thing is, Supervisor advised policy number 101.601, discrimination, has been prevention policy, and that's the three things we had. Thank you, sir, that's it.
Thank you, Lee. Next, Supervisor Kaiser, Economic Development and Tourism.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The committee approved the creation of a capital project fund to include a locusture of $73,608 to fund the design and relocation of the existing fueling system at the Finger Lakes Regional Airport, under the New York State Department of Transportation 2016 Aviation Capital Grant Program. So that is on the agenda tonight to be voted on accordingly. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Next, Supervisor Heisen, Indian Affairs.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Chipley. Not much going on, but we have a meeting to go to in Albany, somebody asked for this on us at the New York State Association of Counties, so we don't know if Mr. Fisher's going to be our unfaithful consultant, has he said anything? Or you can go. Anyway, we have two resolutions that we've drawn up that are going to be drafted and sent to Association of Counties, so they'll be voted on hopefully at the Indian Affairs meeting. One that Greg liked. Which would be the resolution urging New York State to suspend pension of retired New York State troopers employed by the Cuban Nation. And the other resolution is denying the authority of the Cuban Nation police force.
I will be attending that meeting.
We may have some literature for you to take forward.
Yeah, you might become the delegate.
Mr. Heisen, along with the delegate, that you, if you want a voting member on the committee in addition to Chairman Chipley, we do have to appoint them through a process. You can't just ask them to go down and represent us.
I'll leave that up to the chairman to figure that out.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Thank you. Next, Supervisor Brunau, Public Safety and Criminal Justice.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Public Safety approved one resolution on the agenda for tonight, which will authorize exceptions of the New York State Homeland Security Emergency Service grant in the amount of $18,091. The grant is used to offset expenses relating to the operation of the emergency management. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ernie. Next, Supervisor Drumwader, Agriculture and Environmental Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We, that's through committee, the appointments of Mr. Charles Sumner, a member of the Senate County Soil and Water Conservation Board, and reappoint John Hunt as a grant representative of the Senate County Soil and Water Conservation Board.
Thank you, Paul. Next, Supervisor Trout, Public Works. Don.
Outside of the resolutions that were filed tonight, one issue, Senate County Board of Supervisors authorized the acquisition of the New York State 414 sewer from Senate County Industrial Development Agency. We put that on hold while the towns of others, Senate Falls, get together and they go over their IMAs. So, at the end of the month, we're all being made or something, but we're waiting for them to tell us what's the go-ahead. And tonight, we had a public work meeting before this meeting, and we chose to refill a position for a code enforcement officer, from Mr. Brown, who will be leaving us this year.
Thank you. Next, Supervisor Rennell, Ways and Means.
Thank you, Chairman. Mike Lee. Ways and Means Committee approved several resolutions on the agenda for tonight, including a resolution to adopt the 2019 county budget, and a resolution to adopt the local laws for salaries for certain county officials in 2019. That's it.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, is there any reports of special committees? Don, do you have anything as far as IDA goes?
Uh, IDA was pretty basic, end of the year stuff. Met on December 6, in this Hero's Conference Room at 12:00 in the afternoon. Basically nominated all the officers, did all the contract renewals, everything stayed the same, nothing any different from the year before. Probably the most significant thing we did was, did an extension of an ISAC pilot agreement that held at the Army Depot. It was a three-year pilot, we weren't going to be able to cancel in time. A lot of promises were made to Earl Martin for a lot of his endeavors, so if ISAC doesn't follow through on those, we always have the threat of putting them on the back rules, which they really don't want. Other than that, bye.
Thank you, Don. Is there, is there any other reports of special committees, these boards, most of you folks said that? Anything? Okay. Moving forward, Chairman's remarks. I do have a few remarks tonight. Fellow supervisors, county manager Rowe, county employees, and welcome guests. Tonight, as we conclude our last full board meeting for 2018, on behalf of the entire Board of Supervisors, we thank all Seneca County employees, supervisory staff, and department heads, and we commend you all for a job truly well-done this year. We appreciate your hard work and your patience during a very difficult 2018, especially during the August flash floods and the following weeks of cleanup in the southern Seneca County. Truly, our employees are our most valuable resource here in Seneca County. At the September 11 board meeting in Ovid, I asked all supervisors to join in serving causes greater than ourselves, to move Seneca County forward together as one unified group, standing with county manager Rowe, to find common ground on the issues that had previously caused division, and to work together to resolve those issues for the betterment of all Seneca County citizens. Tonight, I asked this board to focus our 2019 efforts on county water and sewer districts. This board has struggled for too many years to define the problems, restructure the governance of these districts, and address needed changes that will improve operations and reduce costs to all residents. I asked county manager Rowe to work with Public Works Commissioner Preem and our Public Works Committee to fully consider the question, is a county water and sewer authority the best answer? I ask for consideration, and then your action, to report and recommend the best method to the full board for action during the next legislative year of 2019. Thank you for your attention. Next, county managers' remarks, Mitch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to mention to the board and to others in attendance that I drafted a potential amendment to the 2018 budget for the board's consideration. Paul and Cindy had, there was some discussion at the November 27 meeting and subsequent above hotel tax funding for the Cayman, Seneca Lake watersheds and the Seneca White Deer Inc. And so I, on your desk, you have a draft resolution, it will technically not be an amendment to budget because the money is in the account that it would be drawn from, but I'm earmarked to term that I have to do, so at that point in the agenda, I just want to make sure that everybody on the board and those in attendance were aware of that, and there's an essential motion when we get to that point. Other than that, I haven't heard anything further than I just, Chairman.
Thank you, Mitch. Next, county attorneys' remarks. Dave.
Hi there.
Welcome.
Thank you. Frank says hello. And he appreciated me being able to be here tonight, so thank you very much. That's it.
Well, that was easy. Margaret, Communications.
Communications, 181 through 197 are received and filed. In case anybody's wondering, the County of Ovid filed the budget and it's listed on the November 42.
Thank you, Margaret. Okay, resolutions. First, number 15, Supervisor Reynolds.
Thank you, Chairman Chipley. Board of Supervisors authorized amendments to the 2018 Senate County budget.
Is there a motion?
Of course.
Thank you. Any discussion? Uh, this is amendments on the 2018 budget, not the 19. Okay?
Yep.
Excuse me? Yes, Supervisor Trout. Okay, be in no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number 16, Supervisor Reynolds.
Supervisors reclass five positions, support specialists to PC, support specialists effective immediately.
Support. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Did we have a funny issue on that? Did we identify whether we give money for the position, or is this a wrong position?
Mitch, why don't you write Supervisor Trout, Rob and I met subsequent to the committee meetings, and given the dollar amount and his opportunity to move some money around within the allocated tentative 2019 budget, and the fact that the salary increase, if approved by the board tonight, would not become an issue till probably the fourth quarter of 2019, we feel we can handle the modest amendment at the staff level and not ask the board to have to formally amend the 2019 budget tonight.
Okay? Thank you, Mitch. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's passed. Number 17, Supervisor Reynolds.
Board of Supervisors create, authorize filling five clerk positions for the Finance Department.
Support. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
In the opinion of the chair, that motion is passed. Number 18, Supervisor Reynolds.
Resolution authorizing the transfer of task force, vacant, and abandoned properties to the Finger Lakes Regional Land Bank Corporation at a nominal cost.
Support. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Be in no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's passed. Number 19, Supervisor Reynolds.
Authorize Finance Department to pay mortgage tax.
Support. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion here? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's passed. Number 20.
Board of Supervisors, another 19 county budget.
Support. Motion made and seconded. Discussion?
I want to make an amendment to this. I'd like to make an amendment to this. I'd like to take the $10,000 out for the, to rent a building for the auction. We could do that right downstairs, it won't pay for just about nothing. I don't know why we got to put $10,000 in there to do that, and put that money back. That money came out of 11-5, if you look up there, that's the county attorney's salaries. You should put that back up there, because we're still in the market for some attorneys, I think, and we should probably keep that line a little healthier than it is. I would love to have somebody's support on taking the $10,000 out of the bottom line, please.
So, you made a motion...
I'll second that, then.
Make a motion made and seconded to amend?
Yes, I'd like to amend it. Take the $10,000 right out.
Any other discussion on that? Supervisor Hagenow.
Yes, Chairman, Mitch, didn't he produce that to 5,000?
Margaret's notes from, from the meeting indicated that Frank had represented 5 to 10,000, so when we prepared the resolution, we are on the side of the 10. And so that's how the resolution was presented to the board tonight.
Frank just gave a range, so they used the higher end of that. Okay, on the amendment, on the first amendment, to remove that $10,000 from that line item, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, one nay, in the opinion of the chair, that's passed. Okay. Okay. Next, Supervisor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You do when we get through with any more amendments. I would like to amend it up at budget, whereas $45,000 in funding through the hotel motel tax is available in account number 1080215471 for support tourism-related activities within Seneca County. And whereas the Kugel Lake watershed network, Seneca watershed intermunicipal organizations, and Seneca White Deer activities strengthen Seneca County's tourism sector and economy, and whereas supporting these activities is appropriate and important, now therefore be resolved at $5,000 for the Kugel Lake watershed network and $5,000 for the Seneca watershed intermunicipal organization and $10,000 for Seneca White Deer be earmarked as part of the 2019 Seneca County budget in account number 1080215471.
Okay, motion to amend. Is there a second on that?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded. Discussion?
So I have discussion, because I'd like to add more money to that account for other organizations that have come to this board. It's Wonderful Life, ReJairs, Dog Show, Memorial Day, because we have earmarked, and correct me if I'm wrong, I could be wrong, 45,000 for 2019. We've already spent 20 of that with what we've asked for with the watersheds and 10 for Seneca White Deer. So I'd like to be able to put another 25.
Let me, the money is there, Supervisor Lorenzetti. That money can be spent at any time.
Right, but right-
You just have to come up with an appropriate resolution similar to the one that Supervisor Cronenweiler just offered.
I'm just sticking with that, but adding more than 45,000 to it. So I'd like to add another $20,000 for the four-
Well, I don't understand what you mean, adding another 45,000.
Instead of whereas 45,000 in funding through the hotel motel tax-
Is available.
Right, I'd like to-
He's not using all 45 of that thousand. He just earmarked that.
Right.
Earmarked in amounts-
Right, can we earmark 20, can we earmark 65,000?
I believe the answer is no, but I'll defer to the County Manager.
Okay.
The 2019 budget on the revenue side projects 450,000 in hotel motel tax receipts and has 405,000 programmed for tourism promotional, promotional activities by the TPA, which is Chamber, and 45,000 in essentially what's an other line. At the next round of committees, the 2019 annual allocation for the Chamber formally will be before you, for consideration, so if, all other things equal, if the 45,000 in the other line was to go to 65,000.
We can't do it now?
Then the 405 would go to 385.
Correct.
That total of 450 in the revenue line, so I don't know if I help clarify that or not.
I think what he's also trying to point out is, you haven't received this money yet. This is, this is based on projections, and they have to be dispersed throughout the year. It doesn't get dispersed at one time.
That number is based on the last four quarters of how much money that we brought in already?
Three quarters of this year and one quarter of 2019. Is that the way it works, or is that-
Last quarter, 17, and the first three of 18.
So I don't believe you have all the information in on, on what you have yet until we get the figures from the fourth quarter.
So we can add it, we can make-
Anytime throughout the year.
Add it to 2019.
Yes.
For these other people.
Yes. And I, and I think Supervisor Cronenweiler, this was brought up at the last round of budget discussions, and this is just earmarking the money that was discussed previously, which doesn't use up the amount of money that's available there. And if that increases, you can, you can also earmark it as you see fit along the way. Supervisor La.
Supervisor Lorenzetti, good point. Those other events need our support. Are we allocating too much of this money? There's only going to be 45. You're only going to spend 20. That leaves 25 left. Is that enough to support those other events?
That's what I'm saying.
Well, look at it this way, how much did you spend last year?
I know, but are we, will we lock in this 20, or we lock in that, or we reduce those amounts if we see that's needed later on?
We can increase the other amount. We can take away, I guess, is what you're saying, if these other routes needed in 2019.
Yeah, and realistically, you, you need to know what you're dealing with, and we don't have the figures yet.
So my point is, we shouldn't be allocating $20,000 to these three events. That may be too much for them. Maybe we have to give five and five, or three and three, or something like that.
Still have plenty left over. That's what, minimum of 45,000. We're projected to have margin of that.
But I think they're saying we're not. Maybe we're going to have more of that. There is a chance it could be less than the 45,000.
That's possible. Until, until we get the fourth quarter results, we won't know. I mean, Mitch, do we have any idea where we stand for the last quarter of 2017 and the, and the three quarters of this year yet?
I would ultimately defer Frank Sinicropi, who is the Treasurer, collects those receipts. I think we're close to having those numbers. The other irrelevant fact is that the resolution that this board passed last year for this year had kept the amount of the Chamber at 350,000, in part to make sure that as those quarters catch up, we know what our commitments are, so.
Okay. Supervisor Heisen, did you try to bring your hand up?
Yes, I'm trying to find out. I'm trying to find out. We already have that money in the bank from last year. We went back to say how much money was actually brought in in the last four quarters, so they know how much they had. That mean the money in the bank already? You'd like to revert funds from-
Well, you have, you have the first, the fourth quarter of last year should be in the bank, and, and two out of the quarters this year should be there, and the third quarter, we don't know yet.
Third quarter, and it is September 30.
Yeah, but we haven't received all the money that comes from New York State and, and the NMDs that collect this yet.
Well, I think the Chamber hates to say it. You're going to get mad at me. It should, we should stay, that should stay the same at 350, not go up another 100,000 in one year.
There's already, there's already precedent set.
I know, it's a contract, a four-year contract, which we probably shouldn't have voted for, but we did. I'm sure we can, we can break the contract if you want to.
Supervisor Kaiser.
Yeah, my point exactly is Mr. Heisen pointed out to address Ralph's concerns about having enough money for these other events. We are, I guess we're locked into a four-year contract with the Chamber for TPA and a certain percentage. They're guaranteed, is that correct?
That's correct.
That could be adjusted. That could be adjusted down. When that was put in place, the revenues weren't what they are now. I think Mr. Heisen is on to the right track here. I think we need to take a good look at that, and maybe that could be adjusted, the percentage allocated to the Chamber could be adjusted down slightly.
All right, back on the original motion to amend from Supervisor Cronenweiler. Is there any other discussion?
So are we keeping it at the 45, is that it?
No.
Right now?
The 45 is, is the difference between the, that's the 10% rule. If there's no more discussion, I'm going to ask, I'm going to call a vote on Supervisor Cronenweiler's motion to commit basically half of this money that's available. All in favor? Opposed? In the opinion of the Chair, that's passed.
So I have another question now, before we move past the budget. We haven't voted on it, right?
We haven't voted on it yet. We're still making amendments.
Okay, so, hold on, let me figure this out now. When do we vote about the salaries? Salary increase for people? Is that going to become, is that an amendment? Did we already vote it, or can we make changes?
Margaret, do you know what number of resolution had in place?
Page 22.
Did you hear that?
Okay, how do we vote on the budget then, before we do that?
Yeah.
Right? I'm confused.
Money's in the budget.
Yeah, salaries are in the budget.
Okay, so, well, in fact, if we vote for the budget now, but then we vote here where we don't, where we don't agree with everything, is that, is that right?
You actually set, you actually set the salaries separately from the budget amount.
Okay, so the order that we're voting in is okay.
The budget puts aside the money, and then you're making a subsequent determination as to what the salaries will be.
Perfect, very good. Thank you. Just asking before I make a vote.
Supervisor Davidson.
So, going along with Cindy, are you going to be looked at on an individual basis, is that correct?
You have, you have your law that you'll be voting on as essentially as a, to address that the law provides what the salaries will be. You can adjust the law, you may not, you may not have, you may have to wait the 10 days if you make the adjustments to allow for public comment.
If you decrease salaries, not increase, what if you decrease?
You do, you do anything to the budget. I mean, that, that part of it, you're going to leave yourself open for the 10, not, I'm saying you can stop it.
Right.
It's just there is an open period for renewed comment before the law becomes effective.
So then we have to do it at the next quarter, correct? Is that what you're telling me? If we decrease, or say increase?
Either way.
Right, right.
Doesn't make any difference. If you change from what is written and what was just advertised, I think you would have to go back.
You don't have to re, you don't have to go back and republicize, it just has to be the 10 day waiting period.
Okay.
Okay, if there is no other amendments, I will ask for a vote on the 2019, excuse me? I will ask for a vote on the 2019 county budget as amended. All in favor? That's passed. Number 21, Supervisor Trout.
Board Supervisors approve lease with Jack and Jill Child Care Centers.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Be in no further discussion, all in favor? That's passed. Number 22, Supervisor Trout.
Chairman of the Board authorized signs, no, basically not. Support.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion here? If not, all in favor? That's passed. Number 23.
Board authorized Seneca County Water District Administrator to solicit bids for search wells. Support.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion here? If not, all in favor? Passed. Number 24.
Board crews, or, Board crews, foes, town highs, Seneca Lake Water District, water wells.
Forward. Who seconded that? Thank you, Ernie. Any discussion? Supervisor Kaiser.
I'm not going to be supporting this because I was disappointed that the Town of Barre did not act in good faith and rescind their water rate increase that was put in place supposedly due to this situation, and also the fact that they did offer that in their board meeting, that they would reconsider it if we came to a settlement, and they refused to, and therefore I can't support this.
Okay, any other? Supervisor Lorenzetti.
I'm just going to say ditto. I'm not going to repeat it, I'm like-
Anybody else? If not, all in favor? Opposed?
Supervisor Trout.
No.
Supervisor Brownout. Supervisor Reynolds.
No.
I'm sorry, sir?
No.
Supervisor Garlick, Lorenzetti.
No.
Supervisor Davidson.
No.
Supervisor Proudy.
Yes.
Supervisor Kaiser.
No.
Supervisor Lazaro.
Yes.
Supervisor Cronenweiler.
Yes.
Supervisor La.
Yes.
Supervisor Rebrevi.
Yes.
Supervisor Heisen.
Oh, I guess I might as well guess it.
Supervisor Shipley.
No.
Supervisor Hagedell.
The ayes are 354, the nays are 396. The motion fails. Yay, have a Merry Christmas.
Doing that meaningful money from the water that you stole, I tell you.
Bob, you left your coat.
You'll come back for it soon as he gets downstairs. Number 25, Supervisor Trout.
Board of Deans hires as part-time highway maintenance supervisor.
Motion.
Motion made and seconded. If not, all in favor? Is this discussion?
Oh, yeah, let's see. He's in charge of maintenance, is what it said here at one time, yeah. What's maintenance considering of? I think he's be former of the whole operation, not just charge of maintenance. Maintenance of what? Trucks, or what?
We had to say it briefly.
Whatever they needed to do, I think.
It was a position that was open, that's why we put him in that position.
Supervise onsite operations.
Is that right, Kathy? That's how we, that's, the position is open, that's why we put him in that position.
All right. What are you asking?
Well, maintenance of what? He should be foreman under Sam for the Seneca County Highway Department. The head foreman. Yes, he could be maintenance of trucks, and everything else would be something else.
Sam, is there a particular title for this position?
I think Kathy's got an answer.
I, I think that's what, Ernie, am I, am I wrong? Are you asking what he's, what is he going to supervise? Is that, is that what you want to know?
Is it maintenance of trucks, or is it maintenance of whatever?
I think he's just in charge of oversight.
He's in charge of the highway department down there on a daily basis. What are you doing?
Right, that's what he should be, but this is not saying it.
It's just an open position, and that's what we put him in because it was an open position. That's all it was. It was nothing-
All I'm saying is, I think the title should be changed.
Although that, that would affect the, I'm sure would affect the civil service.
Highway maintenance supervisor is one of three positions that oversees the operation of all the highway operations. So it's not just, it's oversight over all of the people in the highway department.
Are you satisfied with that answer?
Not really. Go ahead.
Supervisor Kaiser.
Well, while we're at it, we should consider beginning of the year here that we really need somebody down there in the civil water system as a supervisor, because right now- need somebody down there in the similar water system as a supervisor, because right now, right now, the employees are, are operating down there with no oversight.
Supervisor Kaiser, we've got a vote on this, on the motion that's on the floor, not, not create something else.
Yeah, thank you, mister.
Any other discussion on this motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number twenty-six, Supervisor Trout.
For the sake of not going out of order, I have the resolution, and I'm gonna read at the end of all the resolutions, but to keep them in line, this is my last one, so at the end of the meeting, I'm gonna read my other resolutions. Grant acceptance for mental health department facility upgrades.
Support.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion here? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number twenty-seven, Supervisor Cronenweathers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor is appoint Charles Sumner, a member of large Sonica County Soil and Water Council.
Support.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number twenty-eight, Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor is reappointing John Hunt as train representative of Sonica County Soil and Water Council.
Support.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number twenty-nine, Supervisor Burnout.
Accept the FY two thousand eighteen emergency management performance grant.
Support.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion here? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number thirty, Supervisor Kaiser.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Create a capital project and establish a budget for the New York State Department of Transportation, twenty sixteen aviation capital grant to design and relocate fueling system into Figger Lakes Regional Airport.
Support.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number thirty-one, Supervisor Davidson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Civilly authorized the adoption of the order supervisors of the County of Seneca, Local Law Number One, year two thousand nineteen.
Support.
Motion made and seconded, Supervisor Lorenzetti, this is what you asked about previously.
Yes, sir, thank you very much. So, I, I would, I don't know, do I have to ask from the denim, or do I just say, can we do these on a one-by-one basis and vote, and then if there's something that's either increased or decreased, I do understand that we have to bring it back in a ten-day, it would be at the next quarter, correct, county attorney?
No.
We have an end-of-year meeting.
At the end-of-year meeting, yeah.
Doesn't the budget have to be filed by the twentieth?
The budget's, the budget's different, you just approved your budget, as I said, the budget is done.
This doesn't have anything to do with that.
This, this is simply how you're out, underlying how you're allocating the money for specific salaries. I, the, the issue would be, since you, you want to, I mean, do you intend, I guess the question which you just sort of asked is, do you intend to say, hi, let's talk about the chairman, hi, let's talk about the board, or do you have specific, you, you wanna bring a, a motion to amend, make, eat one or more at one time, it's sort of, it's however you want to succeed, but it would be voted on probably one at a time.
I, I agree, because there may be other people, it's not just me, maybe possibly, so.
And you, and if, since you're dealing, since you're also, you're dealing with specific individuals, which is, I, I, it's, it's close to an issue as to whether you go to executive session.
Oh, that's your call then, but they're not, it's, it's the job that they hold, right? Whatever, if you wanna go to executive.
The issue is if you're going to, I guess the issue that I'm concerned about, which would be executive session, would be if you're gonna be talking about specific performance or criteria, or character, or something like that, then that's probably an inappropriate personnel discussion. If you're just going through, if you intend to make a dollar suggestion only, that's appropriate, but if you're going to get into discussion of specific reasons, then that would be an issue.
I think it's a grand dollar thing, though, too.
Yeah, it'll be like, whatever it was held over, matter, so I could say, it's whatever they made in twenty eighteen. Correct?
Well, this, look at.
Right?
So are you looking to make any?
Decre, not decrease, but not increase.
Are you looking to make a motion to amend right now, or, or you want us to go these line by line? Is that what you're asking?
I guess line by line. And if I don't bring criteria up, and I just say, hold it where it's at.
Well, you're gonna make, you know, you can make, if you wanna be the, the roller, so to speak, you wanna say, okay, I moved, starting at the top, if you don't wanna worry about anything till you get down to the middle of the list, you would say, I moved to amend the salary for so, for this position to X, and somebody makes a second, it could be voted on, and then you could say, okay, now I wanna move to amend another position. I mean, that would, that's how you would probably do this.
Okay, I, I mean, I, I know what, my personal work, where I'm coming from, I don't know about anybody else. I like, go one by one, so.
Kathy, a question has been raised regarding the salaries as listed in the motion, is that the, does that include just the three percent increase?
What's a step increase?
Oh, and a step, and a step in there as well.
For those that have steps. So in other words, to answer your question, this would be the complete increase?
First, the cost of living, and then also the.
If, if, if that position had a step, or not, some of them do not. Supervisor Kaiser, you've had your hand up quite a while.
Yeah, thanks, Chairman. I would like, Miss Lorenzetti, to reconsider that, maybe we ought to be going into executive session, we might not all agree with what you put forward for a change. We might wanna discuss differing opinions based on perhaps some personnel information that might, we wouldn't be able to. So I'm, I'm suggesting that maybe perhaps we enter into an executive session to discuss it. So we're on the same page, when, if we make a change, we don't have to discuss it publicly, we agree or not.
So are you offering a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing the?
Yes.
I'll say.
The salaries and the work history of certain individuals? Yeah, you're gonna answer, maybe.
I don't really think it's gonna take.
The question, the question has been raised, do you want to hold this item and do this at the end, and go through the rest, the rest of the items that people may be here to follow?
Yes, I would be open to that.
Aye.
Would you be open to that?
Sure.
Okay. So we'll suspend the voting and discussion on number thirty-one, and move on to number thirty-two, Supervisor Davidson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor has been ruled aboard for the hearing board meeting.
Support.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Be no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number thirty-three, Supervisor Davidson.
Men the rules of the board to establish the two thousand nineteen election meeting.
Support.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number thirty-four, Supervisor Davidson.
Board of Supervisors, number one oh one, plus six oh one, Mr. Mr. Ray Haras, the policy, thank you, immediately.
Support.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number thirty-five on page thirty-two, Supervisor McGreevy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board approves contract, New York State Department of Health Bureau of Communicable Disease Control for the rated control program.
Support.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number thirty-six.
Number thirty-six, board approves contracts with U L eight Medical B C in Figger Lakes Community Health for S T D testing and treatment.
Support.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Be no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number thirty-seven.
Authorization for out-of-state conference in Maryland and use of county vehicle for probation and addiction department.
Support.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. Number thirty-eight.
Supervisors authorize acceptance of one hundred and sixty-one thousand one hundred dollar grant from the New York State Office of Alcoholism and Substance Abuse Services, O A S A S, in support of employee response services.
Support.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number thirty-nine, Supervisor McGreevy.
Three thousand nineteen Mental Health Services Provider Agency Contracts.
Support.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion here? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number forty, Supervisor McGreevy.
Board approves mental health and substance abuse providers agreements for contracted services.
Support.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number forty-one, Supervisor McGreevy.
Board of Supervisors approve the appointment of Figger Lakes Workforce Investment Board Member.
Support.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. Number forty-two.
Forty-two, Board of Supervisors approve the appointment of Figger Lakes Workforce Investment Board Member.
Is there a second?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Number forty-three.
Accept donation from Sonica Meadows Landfill for children and families in need.
Support.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Number forty-four, this is the one you wanted reading in entirety?
Yes, sir.
So yours?
Number forty-four, Sonica County Board of Supervisors proclaims January as Human Trafficking Awareness Month in Sonica County. Whereas, human trafficking has been recognized as a form of modern-day slavery that occurs nationally in every state, including New York and in many communities across the state, and whereas, human trafficking shall mean the recruitment, transport, harboring, or receipt of persons by means of threat or use of force, fraud or coercion, and whereas, victims of human trafficking can be anyone. Most identified victims of trafficking in New York State are American-born females. However, immigrant and undocumented youth, as well as male and transgender youth, have been identified as victims of sex and/or labor trafficking, New York State Office of Children and Family Services. And whereas, youth are especially vulnerable to being trafficked include those with a history of abuse, including sexual abuse, physical abuse, maltreatment, neglect, and subu, substance abuse, children with disabilities, children in foster care, or who have been involved in the justice system, L G B T Q, youth and runaway, and homeless youth. And whereas, the New York State Office of Children and Family Services has provided funding to the Sonica County Division of Human Services over the last three years to provide community awareness campaigns, community education and training, and to provide resources and services to youth identified as a victim of trafficking, or those who may be at risk. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Supervisors proclaims January as Human Trafficking Awareness Month in Sonica County, and recognizes January eleventh, two thousand nineteen, as National Human Trafficking Awareness Day.
Support.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number forty-five, Supervisor McGreevy.
Thank you. Board of Supervisors approve the two thousand nineteen state harbor plan.
Support.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Number forty-six, Supervisor McGreevy.
Number forty-six, Board of Supervisors authorizes the creation and filling of one part-time temporary vital employment and training assistant position.
Support.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unfinished business.
Oh, I have a resolution.
Other than, other than number thirty-one, at this point.
Would we recommend a new business?
Yeah, I have an extra resolution that I passed before the meeting, but I'm on, it's out of line with Margaret's number two.
Do you think it's wrong?
I'm ready.
Okay.
Senate County Sewer District, number one, number two, per supplemental agreement.
Is there some, is there a second? That's the one that Margaret handed out just before the.
I think there's handwriting on the top.
Yep.
Any discussion?
Did he have a second motion?
This is not, yes.
This is, we're getting the extra money for the grant for the Martin and Millet Judas.
This is the forty thousand.
This is what we talked about.
Yep.
Forty thousand.
Yep.
I'm not gonna support it.
I'm sorry, I missed your comments.
No, I'm not gonna support it, 'cause I think that there's a lot of questions out there, um, we, we have a lot of disconcerting comments, I just don't feel comfortable with it.
Okay. Is there any other comments? Supervisor Lozaro.
What's the timeline on this, and why are we doing it tonight before we have time to consider it, what's written? Is it, is this of an expedient nature that it has to be approved tonight?
Sam still here?
I'm right here, back here.
What is, what is our, what is the date?
The bottom line is, we need to be shovel-ready spring twenty twenty-one. There is a lot of work that needs to happen before we get to that point. We have to get our funding in line, we have to do seeker, there's a lot to do. And then we gotta do permitting on top of it, so it's gonna take some time, so we need to keep moving forward, that's the whole point of this.
Aye.
Yep.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Supervisor Kaiser.
I'd like to respectfully regress Mr. Trout's comment that he would not support this project if eventual reality happens that we don't get the funding and there's a twenty million dollar in price tag. By that time, if we keep going forward with this, we're going to be throwing a lot of money that the sewer districts don't have, that's just going to be thrown away. And I think we've been sold a bill of goods right from the start. I don't think this necessarily was the best option. I think it was decided by a former county administrator that this is what he wanted. Therefore, when we hired Martin and Little Judas, they were told by him, I believe, this is what I want, so make this happen and make this look like the plan. And I just... So, I, of course, will not support.
Anybody else? Supervisor Trout.
If we stop moving forward on the project and we don't want to do the centralized option anymore, then the whole board needs to make that decision and say that's what we're going to do. And then whatever the consequences that are, those are the consequences. I do not believe that a committee, after a decision like the centralized treatment option was made by this board, to hold it up at a committee level is wrong. This is the board's decision, this is what the board needs to do, the board's on the hook for it. So, if everybody wants to stop doing this right now, go all the way back, we're going to do some type of correspondence with the D E C telling them we're not going to do what we said we were going to do. That needs to happen sooner than later. That way, we can start the correction because this is a major problem. So, either we need to go forward or we need to go backwards, do one or the other, you know, but...
But the issues need to be addressed.
Yeah, you can't really, you know, say that we're not going to do anything, we need more information right now because we did make that decision. So, if we want to go back and say we're not going to make that decision anymore, we need to inform the D E C of that, right? Of me. No, no screwing around. That needs to happen sooner than later. Or we need to move forward. But this intermediary is not going to work. We're going to be in trouble. Well...
Supervisor Kaiser, you have a...
Yes, I would bet, Don, you keep saying that this board keeps... It was the one that decided to move forward this. But I... There was no board members there, just a few of us stakeholders who were at the meetings regarding this plan. And I guarantee you that most of the supervisors here did not read that report when you voted to act on it. You went by the recommendations put forth by the previous county manager, which weren't accurate. I just want to point that out. Ordinative decision based on very little matter.
Anybody else? Supervisor Davidson.
Not been involved in this, as long as we spoke for, none on the public work committee on that. And I'm not involved with the town stuff where the towns have input back and forth and everything else. Is this the thing I've been told that will raise the sewer rates in the village of Lodi from a hundred-some dollars a year to five-hundred-some dollars a year? Is that the same situation?
Yes.
Mary Ann, is she still here? She can answer that. Six hundred and forty-eight. Yeah.
Six hundred and fifty.
The village of Lodi will go from a hundred and eighty to six hundred and forty-eight dollars a year.
And that's with what kind of improvements to the village of Lodi's system? Except it gets the county a little possibility of having to pay fines, correct?
Well, you're on a timeline right now. For the D E C, that timeline is expensive. We made the decision to go with the centralized option. And if we keep going along that timeline and keep adding the timelines to that, at some point, you're going to run into the fact that after you get this, if we spent the forty thousand dollars per sewer district, you'd have a marketing or a report that you'd be able to go out, seek grant funding, everything else. And the numbers that we're given right now for that six forty-eight or whatever is based upon only getting five million dollars and then funding the other twenty million dollars yourself, which I'm not really interested in doing. But Martin and Little Judas was preparing those numbers, they could only go with what was guaranteed. And out of the twenty-four million, they were only guaranteeing us five million. That's not taking into account docs and everybody else and then running the numbers off that system. When you start doing that, then your numbers change drastically. Now, if you spend the eighty thousand, we're going to be able to have the study we need to go out for the grants and everything, ultimately we can continue on the timeline. If nobody's interested in doing that, that's okay. But the board, this body voted to do it. So, now we need to inform the D E C that this body doesn't want to do it anymore, if that's the case. That's all.
Like I said, I'm not involved... I'm not involved personally with this with the town of Lodi. You know, it's a county situation. And if this is something that needs to be done to keep from costing the county more than it should in the long run, we should probably go ahead and do it. But I mean, that's a big jump from a hundred and eighty dollar or whatever, clearly is what she said, to... That's a big jump for...
It's certainly a big jump, no matter what. It'll double them anyway, you know, basically.
But that's more than double.
That's totally...
That's five times. And I don't think anybody from this board would authorize any kind of an increase like that. Supervisor Lauren Zetti.
Yeah, you're right, you're happy that you aren't there. But I've gone to the meetings and unfortunately, we were given information, we didn't process it well, it wasn't really come across, pointed out to us well. To make a long story short, though, now we have that information, D E C is saying to us, we're not going to... If you're not going to do that, come back to us, tell us what you're going to do. Mary Ann read that. I think that we need to take a deep breath right now, tell them that we're not moving forward with a centralized plan. We have a lot of unknowns. We don't know what docs is going to do, we don't know what the parks are going to do. There's just so many unanswered questions. But yet, we want to put forty grand into grants that are only going to probably, they said, bring five million back and the project's going to be twenty million. I think we need to look at doing it separately, fixing the screw pumps that we already have the money there for, correct? We were told tonight it's there. And I think we were told that if we didn't do this, we were going to have big fines, but that is not what D E C is saying. They just want to know what we're going to do, how we're going to fix it.
Why weren't the screw pumps already fixed?
I don't know, Mary...
They should have been. Ten years ago.
Is these... Are these... The screw pumps...
The screw pumps weren't fixed two or three years ago. We're not giving them go-ahead to fix them because in the centralized option, you decommission them, they're obsolete. The screw pump deck now aren't quite old and, you know, the new centralized option would have made a bigger plant, a fancier plant, and you wouldn't have used them. So, that's why the screw pumps weren't put in, basically.
That's fair.
I'm not saying I'm against this, I'm just... The information trail must be out of sleep and when all this going on or something, I'm not sure what happened.
You weren't told. That's the problem.
Supervisor Kaiser, do you have additional remarks?
Yes, I do. Why are we putting the cart before the horse in the sense, if it's true what I'm told by Mr. Prin that the docs doesn't want to be in the sewer business anymore and they would commit some money? Why didn't we get a commitment from docs before we got to this point? Why are we going into this waist-deep without getting any kind of a concrete, in writing offer of help from New York State? Has New York State really ever been contacted about this?
I wrote a letter to docs, they responded, we had a meeting in September, and we talked about they didn't want to be in the sewer business and that they would be willing to put money for this project to get out of it.
So, why can't...
A centralized alternative.
So, why can't we go to them? Why didn't we go to them and get a firm number? Commitment?
Because there's other information they needed and I couldn't get it to them.
Well, that was way back then. We've certainly had the information since. They should have been contacted and brought in on this before it came to the floor tonight to vote, I would think. If we... If I had some kind of a reassurance from docs that they would come up with a good-sized amount of money, that would change my whole thought on this, obviously, because then I would be worried that we're going to be stuck with something we can't afford to do. And then... And also had those screw pumps fail between now and two thousand twenty-two. So, I don't know why we didn't get a commitment firmly with docs.
Anybody else?
Hold on. Sam?
Yes.
In talking with docs and what is proposed here, don't we need to do this agreement in order to give docs the numbers they want for docs to come up with some financial numbers and in concrete as to what they're going to contribute to our project?
I need the technical expertise from B N L to help me put together the numbers that docs requested in order for them to give us a firm number. Bottom line.
And that's been an eighty-four thousand dollars.
That's a lot, money that's already been paid, a lot of money.
Wow.
And you know, oh, I'm speaking before you resume.
I'm sorry, who was I? I apologize.
Dana, you finished?
That's it, but I just wanted to make sure you knew that.
Supervisor Lauren Zetti, you have additional comments?
Yeah, we're going by what B N L says, they've been in it from day one. But I feel that I would be a lot more comfortable on a vote if we had another engineering company come in and just take a look and maybe give us a second idea, a second opinion. Because quite honestly, I went to a meeting this morning, and I know this has nothing to do with this, but there were supervisors there, we were talking about the same thing, three eighteen, four fourteen, how come you didn't... And B N L did that, and how come this wasn't thought of, how come that wasn't thought of? There's just so many mistakes that I don't feel comfortable with them. So...
Sam, you want to address Supervisor Lauren Zetti's comments?
Well, I just want to reiterate, when the meeting was happened between D E C, it was with Shepherd and M R B. And M R B was the initial group that suggested the centralized alternative.
I don't remember that.
That's what I was told by...
By who?
Mr. Cardinal. He was at the meeting.
Do you remember any of those meetings, Dave? No, neither do I.
That was... Yeah, that was not a public meeting, that was with the engineer, Shepherd, and himself. It was a private agenda.
There you are, folks. How much more do we need to say?
Supervisor Davidson, you have additional comments?
Well, M R B's not the one to take any advice from. I didn't say that.
Well, I need it. I know, we need a whole different side of it.
We don't need to belittle any of these companies. This is a big problem. One way or another, you've got to move forward to get the information to Albany so they can offer some type of what are they going to give us, what can we expect? And at some point, then we have to mix it or find other funding.
I don't think we should spend any grant right now, though.
Okay?
We should mix it right now. Start over.
You're going to spend a whole lot more than our other engineering company to start from scratch to look at this one?
What's been presented is the company, is the county's, it's our information. Somebody can come in and look, they don't have to go through everything. We have that information, the county's already paid for.
That's somebody...
Right? We've already paid them, it's our.
I guess it's our information.
It's our information. It's be like if you went to one doctor and then you went to another one, they would... The one doctor would transfer the other information over. So, they're not going to start all over, they're just going to look it over and say, I don't know if I agree with that, or yes, I agree with that.
Supervisor Trout, hold on, I'm going to go to Supervisor Brownell, he has his hand up first. Ernie?
Well, this was all done before I came on. You're trying to stop what's been done, which you can't do, the water's already over the dam. And one says you can't afford this, you can't afford this, so I don't think you can afford to fix anything.
We're appropriate.
We can fix the screw pumps because they're eight hundred thousand.
Okay, Supervisor Trout. You're going to watch to work together like you asked earlier, you just don't... Well, hindsight's twenty-twenty. Supervisor Trout.
There's certain engineering firms that own the intellectual property and they'll tell you to consult if you try and get it from them.
It's ours.
I don't know if Martin and Little Judas works the same way, but the other major engineering firm that was mentioned here tonight does work that way. So, if you switch midstream, they're not going to give you any of the information.
They're not going to give it up.
We have the information.
They're going to make money, they all are.
We have the information, though.
Well, I guess you can argue this point back and forth.
I can ask the county attorney his legal opinion. We have the information that we paid for.
Depends on the contract you sign. I have no idea. I know that we went through this with a different firm out in Union twenty-five years ago. And they... Basically, what they took, they did their calculations and their numbers and their computer modeling, that's their business. I don't know the data that they want, what they used. All they... All we... All you can tell, the only thing that you can tell them is how many users you have and what are your estimated flows.
And all the information that I've been given, handouts.
And you can show them the reports that they... That's all you can do.
Correct. And the handouts that we've often given.
That's... I mean, you can do that.
Yeah.
I mean, if you're going to ask them to do any... You know, if you hire another firm, the first thing they're going to tell you is, is that our opinion is based on the data you provided us that we have not verified or determined is accurate, and therefore, they're basically telling you it's worth...
Yeah.
A second look.
I think we've already been flushed down the toilet. I think it's gone, I think we're too far into it now.
Okay. Folks, are you ready to vote on this?
Yeah.
Yes.
Six months ago.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Margaret Roll call.
Supervisor Trout? Supervisor Corometer?
Yes.
Supervisor Reynolds?
Yes.
Supervisor Garlick, Lauren Zetti? No. Supervisor Brunel?
Yes.
Supervisor Davidson?
Yes.
Supervisor Proudy?
Yes.
Supervisor Kaiser?
No.
Supervisor Lazaro?
Yes.
Supervisor La?
Yes.
Supervisor McGreevy?
Yes.
Supervisor Shipley?
Yes.
Supervisor Hackett?
Yes.
Okay, the vote is five sixty-seven yeps and one forty-one nays. Motion pending.
I hope three eighteen goes better than that.
Okay, next, we have a couple of Rule twenty-nines under new business. Who has the Rule twenty-nines? Okay, what committee did... Was it supposed to go out?
Looks like it's under...
I don't know if it's called safety or coming out.
I'll do it.
Supervisor, support pending agreement with the P P A.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion?
You've got to bring it on. You've got to panel.
All in favor of a Rule twenty-nine for the purpose of this motion?
Lee.
Yes. Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed?
Who?
Okay, do it again, Lee.
Really?
You did the Rule twenty-nine?
Yes.
Yeah, really, for the twenty-nine. And then anybody making a motion for the P P A president?
That's what he's doing now.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor, support pending agreement with P P A.
Support.
Motion made and seconded. Ernie, there was two or three.
I did... Mr. Lazaro? Unless you can tell me who did it, I just put down vote, yeah.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Thank goodness we have made progress, and this will be our third union contract that will have been ratified this year. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Mr. Chairman. I would like to introduce the Rule twenty-nine to the Board of Supervisors tonight.
Hold on. Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Finally move forward.
Rock nation commemorating January twenty, twenty-six, two thousand nineteen, seventy county school choice.
Support. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Okay. I think that's all of the twenty-nines. We would go back to the number thirty-one that was adjourned. And...
Oh, I seconded it. I don't know what you want to do.
Supervisor Kaiser, you were in the process of making a motion to go into executive session.
Yes.
Is this for the purposes of determining which salaries that you feel need to be adjusted?
You said it better the first time, but yeah.
Okay. Motion made by Supervisor Kaiser. Is there a second?
I'll second that. But in the motion, he has to say who's going to be part of... Who's going to be in the executive session?
Me and Mrs. Lawrence Eddie.
Okay. That's who has to leave, right? You said that's who has to leave.
Okay. So, for the purposes of this... Of this motion, it would be all the supervisors, the county manager, uh... County attorney, the personnel officer. Anybody else? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're going to go into executive session.